All right, so let's get started. We'll start the meeting as we usually do with the budge of the flag and a budge of silence. Budge of allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And to the republic which stands.
One nation under God.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. As always, if you have an electronic device, please silence it out of courtesy to others. I, we are being filmed or streamed. Is this live or just recorded?
I'm not sure.
Friends from the CMC are here tonight, so everybody should behave themselves. Yes, including me.
Who's that directing that? It's usually you and I causing the problems.
All right, our first agenda item is approval of the minutes of the meeting of March ninth. I hope everybody's had a chance to review them. Entertain a motion.
A motion to approve the minutes, Mr. President.
I'll second that motion.
Motion and second. Any amendments, deletions, edits, credits, further input? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. We have no public hearings. We have one item on the, oh, I'm sorry, we have one additional item, a mayoral proclamation of national works on safety awareness. And I guess since the mayor's not here, I'm reading that. I guess I should stand up and do that whole thing?
Stand up?
With what? Give it to Jeff, all right. Mr. Bloom?
You should have stuck the window, the arm through the window and take it off.
And grabbed it, right?
Should we do it here or over there? It looks like.
They have a poster, so.
A poster, all right. All right, so let me read the proclamation. Whereas Maryland State Highway Administration will be celebrating sixteen years of work zone safety outreach with national safety and transportation organizations, including Federal Highway Administration and other state departments of transportation, and whereas Maryland is committed to performing inspection, maintenance, and construction work to ensure a safe, well-maintained roadway system. And whereas work zones will be active daily throughout the state, and we must protect highway workers as they courageously work to improve the safety and quality of life of those traveling Maryland's roadways. And whereas we recognize, recognize those who work in roadway construction and maintenance, as well as traffic engineers, traffic operations personnel, toll workers, law enforcement officers, emergency personnel, and others whose work environments include the open road, and we honor those who have been injured or lost in the line of duty. And whereas Maryland is raising driver awareness of the need to slow down, stay alert, avoid distractions, and obey signs and flag persons in work zones with the aid of automated enforcement and other education and enforcement efforts to prevent crashes and injuries. And now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the mayor and common council of the city of Westminster, Maryland hereby joins the Maryland State Highway Administration in declaring National Work Zone Awareness Week on March twenty-third through March twenty-seventh, two thousand fifteen, in the city of Westminster. Mr. Glass, comments? Mr. Bloom?
Um, I'll go first. The, uh, clearly what we're looking to do here is to have zero incidents or accidents, and, uh, um, the move over law assists with that. Anything we can do to keep everyone safe, or as safe coming to work as they would be going home is, uh, is our direction there.
As all the billboards say, give us a break, uh, when you're out there. That's our office. Uh, you wouldn't want us to drive through your office at sixty miles an hour, so please slow down.
And, uh, just as an added, uh, detail, that, uh, traffic accidents and roadway accidents are the number one cause of death amongst public, uh, public workers. So this is a big deal. It's, it's very important.
If I, can I just one link for, um, Mr. Bloom, Dr. Bloom here is the certified trailer in flagging operations?
That's correct.
He is the only one in the county who's certified?
Not sitting in the city.
That's for the works done set up and.
Yeah, traffic, temporary traffic control supervisor and flag instructor. All right, thank you very much, gentlemen. All right, next item is consent calendar approval of February departmental operating reports. Entertain a motion?
I recommend to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No reports from the mayor. He's out of town. Reports from standing committees. Mr. Whitson?
Nothing to report.
Ms. Albert?
Nothing to report.
Mr. Kavachi?
Well, Mr. President, I don't know if this is a report from a committee more than a comment, so seems like we've been combining them together here lately.
We have the council comments and discussion section next.
Maybe I'll wait for that, Mr. President.
Dr. Becker?
Nothing to report.
All right, um, council comments and discuss, uh, actually I have one report. Uh, we had our weekly, um, progress meeting on the fiber project, and, um, the contractor Henkels and McCoy is making outstanding progress since the weather has broken. And, uh, the conduit is almost completely in place at, out at, uh, Caraluthern Village and Fairway Drive, and, uh, I believe about seventy-five percent in place out at the air parks. And, uh, the next step is going to be the beginning of the installation of the drops, uh, out at the air park, um, and then starting to pull fiber within the next couple of weeks. So, um, we're really plowing ahead and making a lot of progress, so that's going well. All right, council comments and discussion. Mr. Kavachi?
Mr. President, I have two, two items I wanted to touch base on. One, I'd like to compliment Ms. Gruber and her staff, and I know it just wasn't her alone. I realize that a lot of the other city staff played a role in it, but I was able to go down and partake in some of the activities for the, um, the, uh, St. Patrick's Day celebration, the, what was it called, the Celtic Canter? Um, although I did not run in it, which I know is shocking, lovely. But, uh, but I did partake in some of the other activities, particularly the pub crawl, and, uh, it was great. And, you know, the weather was terrible. It couldn't, other than maybe, you know, sleet and snow, it couldn't have been any worse. Yet there were still a lot of people downtown. Uh, the, the, the places were packed, which, you know, they would have been busy on, on, on a Saturday before St. Patrick's Day, but not that busy. I spoke to a number of the, the, uh, the owners downtown, both of some of the restaurants and even a few of the shops, and all of them commented on how this event and all the activities brought a tremendous amount of business to them, and they were very grateful for it. And I, I just wanted to say thank you. I know it was a lot of work. It's unfortunate that the weather didn't cooperate a little more because it would have been even probably better. But frankly, I'm not sure that some of the businesses could have handled anymore. I know most, a number of them, that you couldn't have gotten more people into them. So it really, uh, was a wonderful event, and I'm sure if we can get some decent weather next year, it'll even be significantly bigger because of course now everybody's gonna tell all their friends, and it was really, really wonderful. Great job, kudos. And then, uh, also, uh, Dr. Glass, I just wanted to comment. I had an opportunity to just recently, uh, play with, no, not play with, um, I didn't mean play with, to closely examine our new, uh,
Grapple.
grapple truck, and it's really impressive. That, that thing's awesome. I, 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 I was talking to you for a moment, just for everybody else, you know, we spend money on something like this, and we put a lot of faith and, and trust into you and your staff to know what we're, you know, we, we're not out there doing this every day. And when we, we purchased it, you know, I thought, okay, this seems like a good idea, um, but, you know, after going out and observing it and then discussing with you, it's going to save a significant amount of, of time and effort and, and probably some injuries, some, you know, long-term backs being worn out and people getting hurt on the job by using that machine. So it, it, really great purchase. And Larry, I wanted to say thanks for letting me, uh, examine it so closely. It really works well. So, that's all.
Thank you.
Outstanding. Any other co, council comments or, or discussion? All right, next item is, uh, one bid for the armory repair and repointing of exterior walls. Um, I would imagine that's you, Mr. Glass?
Yes, sir. Um, the current, uh, general budget contains a hundred and twenty thousand, five hundred dollars identified as the Longwell repointing. And that's for the repair of the stone masonry and coping, um, down at the armory building. And this is a continued effort to preserve that historic structure and not prevent any water permeation that, uh, has degraded those interior surfaces over the years. The project was, uh, was publicly advertised in, in February, and, um, and the RFPs were due on, uh, March twelfth. At two o'clock, we opened them here in this building and, uh, um, and read the results. And, um, the way it turned out, we only had, uh, it was a single, uh, bid that we received from masonry resurfacing, and that was in the amount of sixty-two thousand, five hundred dollars. And it should, um, be noted that they most recently did some work for us, although they've done considerable work for the city. They were the contractor that did the repair to the, uh, Green Street Bridge that was, uh, we had to have done just recently, so, uh, um, and they, they've always done good work with us and had a very high level of cooperation as well. Um, so at this point, I would recommend that the mayor and council accept the bid, uh, masonry resurfacing and construction company in the amount of sixty-two thousand, five hundred. Uh, but along with that, what I would, uh, would note is that if we need to spend more than that, we have up to a hundred and twenty thousand, five hundred. This bid amount of sixty-two five was for basically, um, um, to get unit prices. So we may have to, and very likely will have to, spend more than the sixty, uh, two thousand, but, um, exactly where that'll be, I, I can't tell you right now until we get into the project, but we needed to have a bid number, uh, for unit prices that we would, you know, um, use from and add to or subtract from if we, uh, if we need to, so, but we won't exceed the one twenty-five hundred. The budget number will be the top end.
Thank you, Mr. Glass. Any questions of council for Mr. Glass?
Mr. President, so to, it, it, it sounds to me like really the sixty-two thousand, I, I, I guess if we vote on this, we probably need to vote on allowing you to spend up to the budgeted amount versus the sixty-two thousand because I think if we just, you know, vote to approve the bid, you're gonna be capped at sixty-two thousand. Uh, Ms. Levin, is that correct? Or do we need to, to make a motion to allow them to spend up to the, the budgeted amount?
If, if the bid is for, um, sixty-two five and he's saying it will cost less, your motion can be to spend up to the, it, it'll make a difference.
It's gonna cost more than sixty-two, is what he's saying.
But if to spend up to.
No, up to the actual contract limit will be up to the budgeted amount?
Well, the budgeted amount is bigger than.
The budgeted amount is a hundred and thirty, hundred, twenty thousand, but the bid was for sixty-two thousand.
Twenty.
Yes, so you can.
So we need to make a motion to allow up to the budgeted amount, which is beyond the bid amount?
I would make a motion to spend the, to contract for the bid amount.
And then what we could do at that point is to.
Come back and amend it.
Um, but it wouldn't have to be by change order because we already have the bid numbers, the bid amounts per line item. So it's, it's an increased quantity is what it would amount to at that point.
We're buying more units, basically.
Yes.
Right.
Councilman, let me amend that. Go ahead and make the motion to spend up to the, up to the contracted, up to the budget.
Okay, so the motion would be for him to be able to spend up to the budgeted amount, which is in excess to, right.
With this unit price.
Yes, yes.
That, that, that was my point, because I'm afraid that if we just pass it as is, you're capped at sixty-two thousand. And it sounds to me like you're gonna be more than that. It's very likely. Okay. So I'll make a motion, Mr. President, and I'm sorry, is there any other, I didn't, I'll jump out.
No.
I'll, I'll make a motion, Mr. President, that we, uh, accept the bid and allow, uh, Mr. Glass to spend up to the budgeted hundred and twenty,
Five hundred.
thousand, five hundred dollars if necessary, uh, to, for the pointing at, at Longwell.
I'll second that.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next item is ordinances and resolutions. Introduction of ordinance number eight fifty-two, repealing and reenacting chapter sixteen of Code of Ethics to provide more stringent and comprehensive conflict of interest provisions and financial disclosure requirements in order to better protect the public interest in ensuring the highest integrity of city officials and promoting public confidence in the absence of corruption and conflict of interest in city governments. Uh, so I'll entertain a motion to introduce ordinance number eight fifty-two.
So I believe, Mr. President.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion or comments?
Couldn't have been a much shorter name, my goodness.
Not now.
All right. Uh, so hearing no discussion or comments, all in favor of introducing ordinance number eight fifty-two?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next ordinance is number eight fifty-three, the water and sewer allocation. Uh, entertain a motion to approve that. I'm sorry, introduce, it's, I'm sorry, thank you.
I'll make a motion to introduce it.
Second that.
Motion and second. Any discussion, comments on the ordinance number eight fifty, introduction of ordinance eight fifty-three? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and then the last is a resolution number fifteen dash two, water and sewer allocation.
I'll make a motion to, uh, introduce that as well, Mr. President. That is for introduction, correct?
No, this is a resolution. This is.
Oh, that's a resolution, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Mr. Council President?
Yes.
There are two, um, corrections before you adopt, which is on page five. Um, there seems to have been an actual code of terms that got concerted and modified and app. So where there, where it says F two and three, that's F two, and they should be renumbered three, four, and five after that.
I, I, I'm glad you mentioned that because there was another one that I.
And on the preceding page, there should be a two thousand and sixteen, the date says January first, twenty-one oh six instead of two thousand and sixteen.
Um.
Oh, okay.
Yes, and they're also in one of the wheres is, um, I'll find it. It's, uh, I can't find it. There was a date discrepancy somewhere.
We might have fixed that one.
Okay. All right, any other comments?
I just had a question or two. Um, the prioritization in here is still just a little bit unclear to me. So I just wanted to know a little bit, um, was if, as far as, you know, who gets the water first? Could you just make that a little more clear to me and how that, how that would go? In the sequencing of it, like if we want it for, I mean, we have the, uh, places that get it, uh, you know, governmental offices, et cetera. So the residential is basically the last priority. Is that correct?
That's correct. The, um, the way the allocation will be distributed when the gazelle well comes on and we have the three hundred thousand gallons to distribute, be forty thousand gallons, um, a year, and would be split seventy-five t, for commercial and industrial and twenty-five percent for commercial, I mean, for residential.
Okay, so that's, that's first come, first served, according to what I read. I was just making sure that was clear. Okay, so that will, they will apply.
Right. And then if it's not used, it, it can be switched, uh, the direct, director of planning and community development can make a switch if it's not, if it's, what's gonna be used
Twenty-five percent.
or it can be carried over, or it can be put in conserv.
Okay. Up, up to a certain amount, correct?
Right, to a certain amount.
It's not unlimited.
Up to twenty-five percent.
Twenty-five percent. Okay, just making sure that I understand that clearly. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions from council? All right, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We are on to unfinished business. We have no unfinished business. We have no new business. Department reports. Ms. Wolf?
Mr. Glass?
Um, the only thing I would have to add is, uh, of course, at, at the end of the meeting, which appears to be rapidly approaching, if I was interested to, to, uh, take a look at the truck and have the opportunity to examine it, it's not a toy and you're not playing with it, but, uh, much like, uh, Councilman Kavachi did, him with a muffin to do that because we'd certainly like to, uh, you know, get the opportunity, um, and we're not boastful, but, um, when we have opportunity like this, I'd like to spread that around a little bit so you guys get, do get to see the good things that we do. The idea here is obviously, um, if we can prevent injury, back sprains and strains, and do more with less, that's what we do with public work. So, uh, although we're not the biggest or largest expenditure of the departments any, any longer, but, uh, we try to do our best at this point. And that's all I have to offer.
It's recreation. That's the largest expenditure.
It seems, it just seems that way.
Um, well, thank you for your kind comments, Councilman Kavachi, about the Celtic Canter and Irish celebration. It certainly was, um, a massive team effort, and I would be remiss if I didn't, um, count in the, um, Captain Misty Bedensky across the room from me, who was at the helm of all of our, um, road closures and organizing the over forty police and volunteers that it took to close our streets down, as well as Mr. Larry Bloom, who was here but not here. I kept hearing him say that, but I kept seeing him, so I'm not sure. He was trying to remain invisible, but he couldn't. It was a miserable day for most of the staff that were, and the volunteers that were standing out there just getting soaked. But I think that the takeaway from it was that it was worth it, um, because of, of what you said, to see the people out on the streets on what would have been particularly a, probably a pretty vacant day downtown due to the weather. So, um, by all accounts, we are pleased with the success of the event. Um, certainly would have liked to be working in better weather, but we'll take it either way. Um, we're still very much in the wrapping up process of that, getting feedback, um, and figuring out what we can improve and build upon for next year. So, some interesting statistics, we had, um, about seven hundred registered runners. Around four hundred and fifty actually turned out the day of the event to run the race. And of the four hundred and fifty runners that were, um, out on the course, two hundred and fifty free beer tickets were redeemed at the beer tent. So, you know, I guess if you're gonna run in that weather, you deserve a beer when you're done, I think is the philosophy. Um, so it really was, it was a great, great day. And, um, i- if anybody has a chance to hop on the Celtic Cancer Facebook page, that is not a page that's managed by the city. So it is all unsolicited comments, and, um, it's some really positive feedback that, that's going on, um, in conversations on that page. So I'll have some aggregate, uh, statistics for you after we send out a post-race survey to the runners, uh, which hopefully will go out sometime next week. So, on to the next event. Um, our egg hunt is this weekend, and sadly, I just saw a weather report and it is supposed to snow. I'm not lying, Friday night into Saturday. Um, not a lot of snow, but. Hunting for eggs in the snow seems very wrong. They'll be easy to find, I suppose. Um.
Why would you drive them?
But we did develop an interesting partnership this year. We worked with Change Incorporated, and they are adult vocational students, and they stuffed nine thousand plastic Easter eggs for us in two days.
Wow.
So it was, um, a fantastic partnership because normally we're handing them out all over the place to anybody that says, yes, I'll throw some Tootsie Rolls and some eggs for you. So that really saved us a lot of time to take them all to one place and get them, uh, completed. Currently, right now, looking ahead to Flower and Jazz Festival and hopefully some warmer weather. Um, we have a hundred and ten registered vendors already, which, uh, we're way ahead as compared to years past. So, um, we're excited because we are extending partially into the block, um, removing the festival from John Street up to Harry's. And the porch of Harry's will have some entertainment, and we'll have vendors into that block and probably a children's carnival area. So we're looking forward to pushing a little bit further our borders of that particular festival.
Will it still start up at Longwell?
Mm-hmm.
So it's just grown, is, is what's happening. Awesome.
Um, I'm also happy to report, and I sent out some photographs at the end of last week, that the Charles Street hot lot is under construction. All of the old equipment is out, and the new equipment is going in, and one of the comments that I heard was, boy, is that slide really tall? A little kid looking up saying, boy, is that slide really tall. So we have some really neat equipment going in there. Um, it's exciting, and it's nice to be adding, um, such cheerful units to that particular neighborhood that was in need of some new and updated equipment. With that being said, the last thing I have to report is I'm happy to say that we've made it to the second round of some grant funding that we applied for through a foundation called Kaboom. And, um, the way this particular program works is they basically donate the playground equipment and we donate the labor. So, um, the playground equipment is valued at eighty-five thousand dollars, and if we donate a hundred people to help install the equipment under their guidance and supervision, um, we have to pay about ten percent and put up about a hundred people. And we get this great playground for a little bit of nothing. So as I said, we made it to the second round. We were engaged in a conference call for two hours last Friday. Um, and they sent us the paperwork for the third round, so we're can, we're, we're heading into that final phase and we're excited about it. Um, and this process moves quite quickly, so if we are selected, we'll be looking at engaging in this process in June for the installation. And, um, the property that we have earmarked is some expanded equipment at Bishop's Garth.
So a hundred people all at one time?
That was, that was Ms.
How are they gonna manage that?
That was Ms. Wolf's question. Um, so.
From this giant gaggle of people for three pieces of equipment.
The way I understand it is, you know, it works sort of like a habitat build, where they look at your volunteer pool. And so there may be some people that are, um, better suited for putting out lunch and icing down beverages and handing out T-shirts. And then there are going to be some people that are better with a post hole digger and, you know, a concrete mixer. So they're going to look at, at the talent pool, but that's about what they, what they suggest is around a hundred people.
I can run the grapple truck if, uh, if you need help with that.
There you go. So the idea is that we would like to develop that site as a more inclusive play area for children with disabilities and then also add some raised garden plots so that, um, people with disabilities can wheel up to a raised garden bed and garden while still seated in a wheelchair.
Wow, that's great.
Yes, awesome. That's where we're headed with that site.
That's great.
That's all I have. Thank you very much.
The finance department is still working on the budget. Um, we expect to meet with directors and Ms. Wolf this week and, um, hopefully finalize the numbers for the mayor. I work, currently working on the utility billing account statuses. Again, we're, um, looking mostly at vacant homes and, and determining the impact on our revenue as a result of vacant homes in the city. Um, we're also, we finally implemented today, uh, the last of the late notices, and so every part of our late notice and utility billing is completely automated through our software system now. Um, we're looking at doing some succession planning. Um, Mr. Bloom has been extraordinarily helpful, um, with getting us a, uh, trash pickup list that's now automated within our utility billing system that, um, helps us to route the, the routes for him. He has an extraordinary amount of local knowledge of, uh, whether there's a business in a parcel, how many units are there. So, um, he was very helpful in going through our list, and we've been able to automate most of that. We've been working on, uh, doing some summary billing from BG and E and on RG. We're still, um, auditing our water rate charts, trying to reduce those down a little bit as well. Um, we're working on report writing for human resources, um, and we expect to utilize two interns this year from the Academy of Finance. Um, they're going to assist us with a database that is also part of our finance package. It's called, um, Parcel Manager. And it's actually records every parcel in the city and then, um, communicates to utility billing so that you can, um, see where each part of your utility accounts are located. And, um, currently, it's not as accurate as we'd like it to be. So we expect to utilize two, uh, of the students in the Academy of Finance this year to help us, um, get that database up and running the way it should be. And we expect it to be helpful with our fiber project as well.
I think most of you know me. I'm Captain Misty Bedensky. I'm the commander of the Field Services Bureau, and I'm here on behalf of Chief Spalding. Um, he gave me, um, a couple of things to talk to you about. Um, as I'm sure you're all aware, we've initiated our naloxone program, uh, program in the field in January. Uh, we had our first successful use of naloxone on. We had our first successful use of naloxone on March the second, when we responded to an overdose at one forty Village Shopping Center for a woman not breathing. The naloxone was administered by the responding officer and the female was revived. She refused treatment and walked away from the scene. And at this point, all patrol officers are now trained and equipped with, equipped to administer naloxone. So it's a pretty good program. He also asked me to advise you that he is in the process of preparing his annual analysis and recommendation for the red light camera program. And he hopes to have that report for you at the next meeting. And Major Stevens is leaving. He's retiring in August. His position has been advertised and we've received nearly twenty applications. The chief has indicated that there are some strong candidates in that pool of applicants. And processes are in place to interview and hire the new deputy chief by August the first. And that's all I have.
I have just two items, and that is the mayor and I attended the Mayor Municipal League Chapter Meeting, which was held on Thursday night. And we had a recap of the legislative process that's going on down in Annapolis. And at this point, the sooner that gets finished, the better off we're going to be because they just took some of our highway user revenue and gave some to Baltimore County and Howard County because they have no municipalities. So that the pot got, got a lot smaller right away. So we're hopeful that that will all stop shortly and we'll be able to count on having a reasonable allocation of funds. The other thing that I would like to point out, primarily for the benefit of our viewing audience out there, we have an election coming up in May. And the April the thirteenth is the deadline for the declaration of intent to be filed. And along with that, a twenty-five dollar fee, and you have to come into the office and do that. That deadline is four thirty on April the thirteenth. April the sixteenth, we will have a forum at the Community Media Center from six to eight P.M. And on Tuesday, May twelfth, from seven o'clock in the morning to eight P.M., we'll have our election. The two polling places will be at the Fire Hall and the Community Building, as they usually are. And that concludes my report unless anybody has any questions.
All right, thank you, Ms. Wolf. We are at the party meeting for citizen comments. Nothing? 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 We are. We are adjourned, thank you very much.
No mayor, just the council.
That was quick.
Marty, mine isn't one of them, so you're going to put up with me for two more years?
Yeah, no.